Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Teresa Thomason. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Coast 9 at Large Counselor. Patty Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Meeting of the Columbus City Council. We're so glad to have you. We've got a fairly short agenda for us, which doesn't mean much to most people. We'll be here a couple hours this morning, but then we have our budget session. So stay tuned. We've got a lot going on today, and we're so glad to have you with us. I wanted to begin by calling forward, as we do every time we come together. Reverend Reginald Thompson, he's with the Revelation Missionary Baptist Church, and he's going to kick us off this morning with an invocation consistent with his faith tradition. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good morning, all. Let us pray. Oh, dear heavenly Father, we come here today in prayer, dear Lord, thanking you for all that you do for us, dear heavenly Father. Oh, dear Lord, we ask that you continue to bless this city, continue to bless the leadership of this city, dear Lord, in a special way. Oh, Lord, I ask that you bless on this election day. Oh, dear heavenly Father, I ask that you be with each and every individual citizen in a special way, dear Lord. We put you first in our lives, dear heavenly Father. We ask for your leadership and your guidance, dear heavenly Father. Without you, we are nothing, but with you, Lord, we know that we can do all things. Continue to be within our lives, dear Lord. Continue to lead us and take us in the way that you would have us to go, Lord. And please, Lord, continue to bless this city in a special way, Lord. And please, Lord, help us all to do the things that are pleasing to you. This I do pray, in thy son Jesus' name, amen.
Reverend Thompson, thank you so much. For those of you all who need to connect the dots, Reverend Thompson's married to the great Valerie Thompson, who's also ministered there, and that's the church of our Mayor Pro Tem, Evelyn Pew. You want to say good morning? Yeah, let me see if I can. Here we go.
Reverend Thompson, if you'll come back up, please. Reverend Thompson is the husband of my pastor, Valerie Thompson. And we also had our block party at Sherwin Winston Park this weekend, and in spite of the rain, it was a wonderful success. And Reverend Thompson worked real, Reverend Reginald Thompson worked real, real hard. And he also shared the day with us. Saturday was his birthday, so not only did he have to work on his birthday, but we had a good time.
That's right.
Well, thank you again, and thank you for what you and your church and ministry do for this community.
Thank you all.
Well, we have some pledges ready to go today. We've got Reece Road Leadership Academy. They're here to say the pledge of allegiance. If you all will come forward here to the big desk and line up, and if the rest of you all would stand and prepare for them to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And if any parents want to come up, you can come up this way if you want to get a better shot. Stand up here. Yeah.
I present allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Wow, really good. Really good. You guys did just great. Well, we want you to introduce yourselves, so say your name and tell us how old you are.
My name's Alyssa Hunz, I'm 10 years old.
My name is Leevah Yehuda, and I'm nine years old.
My name's Grayson Roman, and I'm 10 years old.
My name's Michael Shamberg, and I'm 10 years old.
My name is Musar Grouse, and I'm 10 years old.
My name is Brooklyn Voice, and I'm 10 years old.
What's her name?
Her name is McKinley, and she's six years old.
Six years old, okay. Well, let's give them another round of applause. We're doing an excellent job. And I understand today is the last day of school. Is that right? Yay, that's good. So great. Well, you guys have a great last day, and we want to, of course, recognize all the parents and teachers that are here today. Thank you. We've got a couple of supporters there in the audience. Thanks for coming out. You guys go and have a wonderful summer, all right? Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause, folks. We're going to move some things around on our agenda here. We're going to turn it over to the city attorney, and Clifton, if you'd walk us through the first readings.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of first readings today. The first one is amending the Animal Control Advisory Board to clarify the appointment of the rescue designee on this board. Is there any discussion about that?
All right, let's see. Any discussion on this?
I think everybody's pretty clear on it. It just says the rescue group will designate who serves on the board. Is there a rep? And confirm by council.
Okay.
All right. There are no other questions on that. We'll vote. Are we having a nine o'clock next week, or will it be?
Let me ask, when are we at nine o'clock next week?
Not next week. It's a work session.
Well, you want this on the consent agenda then? All right, that'll be next week on consent. Okay.
All right. Great. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Our next first reading is for demolition of various structures. Mr. Hutchinson is here. We'll go through these properties. If anybody is in the audience concerned with any of these properties, please raise your hand so we can hear from you.
All right. This is the first read on the structures. Why don't we go through that? Then, now that we have a quorum, we can vote on some of the things, go back to the mayor's agenda and clean some things up, okay?
The first property today is 3024th Avenue, Jesus Alvarez owner. Don't see anybody present. Next property, 81634th Avenue, Eddie Moss Blair owner. No one present. 402 Timber Lane Drive. This is Eddie and Lula Buckner owner. No one present. 50523rd Street, Denny Construction owner. No hands. 908 Benning Drive, Mary Dowell owner. 32925th Street, Gosha Ike owner. Don't see anyone. 755 Portland Avenue, Kathy McAllister owner. No hands. 3045 Reece Road, Hubert and Patricia McCray owner. 60123rd Street, Percy Tyndall owner. And also 60723rd Street, Percy Tyndall. Don't see any hands. 21828th Street, Jeffrey Mobley owner. And last one is 138 Torch Hill Road, Lorraine Walker owner. No one present. Okay, if there are no questions or objections, we can list those on the consent agenda also next week.
It has to be two weeks.
Doesn't look like we have anybody queued up at this time.
We did the, the way we did the letters is two weeks, because we wanted to make sure for that.
You wanted to go on to the first meeting in June?
Correct.
Okay, we'll bring these back in June.
Okay. And if you want to go to the second readings, we do have a quorum.
All right. We'll do those real quickly. First one up for a vote is an ordinance rezoning 3784 Graham Way. This is Point 26 Acres Right Way. Petition ready for a vote.
Got a motion and second for approval. Is there any discussion related to this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please, oh, excuse me, let's take electronic vote, I'm sorry. If you would, record your votes electronically. And it passes.
All right. Next zoning ordinance for a vote is 3705 and 3709 Gention Boulevard, the Jack Hayes petition ready for a vote.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion related to this item? Seeing none, all those, excuse me, record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Okay, we do have one to add on. Mayor, can I cover that real quickly?
Sure.
This is an add-on resolution supporting the mayor's letter of today's date to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, expressing concerns about development at 2551 Wenton Road. It's around the table along with the letter, and it's ready for adoption.
All right, there's a motion and second for adoption. Is there any discussion related to this item? All right, and if you would, can they record your votes? No, we can't. We'll have to take an oral vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
All right. And then Ms. Clerk, if you'll get a copy of that to the mayor as soon as possible. That's all we have listed, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Let's go back to the mayor's agenda. We've got the approval of minutes from January 9th, 30th, February 13th, February 27th, executive sessions, and April 24th and May 8th of council meetings. We've got a motion and second to accept. If there's no edits or corrections, which I don't see anyone chiming in, you, all those in favor, please state aye. Okay. We also wanted to bring forward an item from the city manager's agenda, because we have a guest from out of town who needs to get back for a particular meeting, so at this time I'll turn it over to the city manager for an item to be voted on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good morning. This item is on the purchasing agenda. It's item D, auditing services, and we've got Mr. Miller Edwards here from Malden and Jenkins. I'm going to ask him to just come to the front so that you can see who we are asking to do business with. I won't get into a whole lot of details on this, but we shared with you in a previous meeting that Mr. John Fortenberry of Albright Fortenberry and Ninas, our external auditing firm, came to us on August, excuse me, April 25th, 2018, met with us to inform us that his firm would not be able to conduct the city's fiscal year 18 audit, and he advised us that the decision to rescind their services was due to recent occurrences of events beyond their control. And so with that, and it was April, we had to move forward quickly to get an auditing firm on board, and so we shared with you in that previous meeting that we would go to the next highest-ranked vendor for that request for proposal during that TAM, and that next highest vendor was Malden and Jenkins LLC out of Macon, Georgia. They submitted a cost proposal to provide auditing services, external auditing services for fiscal year, years end in June 30th, 2018 through June 30th, 2022. And so we are satisfied with the RFP that came from them, considering that they were the next highest ranked, and we've had conversation with John Fortenberry of Albright Fortenberry and Ninas about this auditing firm, and they wholeheartedly support going to the next highest and had some good things to say about Malden and Jenkins. And so we're asking you this morning to authorize the execution of an annual contract with Malden and Jenkins LLC.
We've got a motion for approval. Is there a second? All right, we have discussion. Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, I am looking, and I don't see it yet. Where is Malden and Jenkins located?
Macon, Georgia.
I'm sorry?
Macon, Georgia.
And one of the questions that I feel like I'm going to be asked is, were there not any local firms? And I understand that you said you went to the next. That's the typical process, is it not?
Absolutely. We went, we go through a RFP process, and we select the, what we consider to be the best responder to the RFP, and many times it's a really close assessment. And Albright Fortenberry, obviously, they've been doing business with us for more than 30 years, and they ranked highest during that RFP, and Malden and Jenkins came in next. And so we believe that we need to go with the best responder to our RFP, and Malden and Jenkins would be that next best responder.
And their bid, if you will, on this is compatible, I guess, with what Fortenberry and Albright did for us?
It is.
Comparable?
And I can tell you that we did this agreement with Albright in 2013, and I will share with you that the difference in price in 2018 from Malden and Jenkins is $5,000 difference.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. There being no further discussion, you all may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And so, Madam Mayor, I would just ask that Mr. Miller Edwards at least introduce himself. He came all the way from Macon, and he has another meeting back in Macon at 1:30, so we wanted to get him out and on his way.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate your efforts today. Let me also just express how much we appreciate the opportunity of service to you. Again, my name is Miller Edwards, and I do come from Macon, Georgia. It actually only took me an hour and a half to get here this morning, so it's not that far away. We have offices in Atlanta, Macon, Albany in Georgia. We've got an office up in Chattanooga, Birmingham, Braden in Florida, and Columbia, South Carolina. To give you a little bit of background of who we are, we serve over 400 governments, local governments, that we serve across the southeast. Governments that are more in line with you all would be, I serve Augusta, Richmond County, Macon, Bibb County, Athens, Clark County, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, Charleston, South Carolina, Henry County, Georgia, just to name a few. We've got quite a few governments that are of the similar size and nature to you all. We've got a great deal of capacity, a great deal of staffing. We have about 300 people that work with the firm, about 90 of those are current in their governmental knowledge, and they work every year on governmental jobs. I've actually got nine partners that do nothing at government, and I'm one of those people. So don't ask me a 10-40 question. I'll have to refer you to someone else, because I don't even do my own return. That's how specialized this industry has become. Again, it's a big part of what we do at Malden Jenkins. It represents about a quarter of all the fees and revenues and hours that we have as a firm, so it's not something that we just use as filler work. It's not something that's like a little redhead stepchild part of the practice. It's actually our biggest part of the practice. So it's something we really feel good about, and again, we're very excited to be of service to you all.
Well, thank you so much, and we appreciate you stepping in in these particular circumstances. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Absolutely. Appreciate it.
All right. We will return now to the normal course of our agenda. We're now entering public agenda, and we have Ms. Taisha. Oh, she's not here. Okay. And Ms. Alamein, doesn't look like she's here. So we'll call on Mr. Wayne Evans, who wants to speak to us about a code violation concern. Good morning, if you would. You can go to the podium there, and I know you have a handout, too, you wanted to put on the projector. And what we'll do, sir, is once you get all set up, you'll state your name and your address, and then we'll set you on a timer for two five-minute periods. Yeah, and we want to call forward John Hutchinson as well. We know he's here, but I'm sure we'll have some questions for him. So, all right, sir, you ready?
Ready.
Okay.
My name is Wayne Evans, U.S. Air Force retired, and I reside at 2831 Cromwell Drive, Columbus, Georgia. I moved here about three and a half years ago. And I moved into my present home because it has a lot of sentimental value, and the neighborhood has always been very well-kept up and been a nice experience. So I'll read what I have here. Complaint against Robert Louis Carson, Po Box 1420 Fortson, Georgia 31808, regarding residence of Robert Louis Carson, 2865 Cromwell Drive, Columbus, Georgia 31906. This residence has been abandoned for a period of more than two years, is at least what I know. As the photographs illustrate, the owner has not attended to their property in over a year, and on a consistent basis for three and a half years, that I have lived at 2831 Cromwell Drive. The residence is four houses down from mine. The weeds and dandelions that infect our lawns are over two feet tall, and I refer to my poster that I have sitting on the desk of, if you turn that on its side, that's about 18 inches tall, about up to your knees, which is the limit of grass, which I think is absurd, to be able to have 18 inches worth of weeds in your yard. Be that as it may, the weeds that infect our lawns are over two feet tall and beyond the maximum grass length of 18 inches. Numerous, excuse me. The photograph I offer is of me, of course, and the weeds range from four feet to seven feet in length. Feet, not inches. And the front yard is an old basketball goal that's been ripped out of the ground with a huge concrete base, also very unsightly. The residence is and has been a sore, not only for my neighbors, but for anyone wishing to buy a home in Cromwell Drive. I've experienced prospective buyers who've inquired, who owns that house? And I said, the house is abandoned, and they shake their heads and drive on. It's, you don't want to buy a home in a neighborhood that looks, have a home that looks like that. The owner, Mr. Carson, here's the rub, he lives in Fortson, Georgia. Upon speaking with Mr. Poole, Mr. Hutchinson, and Marcia Thomas, I am told that since Mr. Carson is not a resident of Muskogee County, their hands are tied, and all that can be done is for a citizen to register a complaint. Then, as I understand, the offender is notified by mail, and when there is no response, a bid is sent out for the lawn mowing service to cut the grass. Then a lien is placed on the said property, yet Mr. Carson, all he has to do is pay the lien for the lawn mowing service, and the problem continues. Ladies and gentlemen, this is not only a blight on our neighborhood, there are other safety concerns and environmental concerns, reports of rats, snakes, raccoons. Numerous feral cats are seen roaming in and out of this property, and the backyard, as well as the front yard, provides an enormous mosquito heaven. The backyard looks worse than the front yard. I met with Mr. Alan Young of the Revenue Department, and he tells me that since the beginning of 2017, only two liens have been placed on this property, yet the property continues to be such a horrible, horrible fix. So the bottom line is this, Mr. Carson has a twice-a-year lawn mowing service provided by the city of Columbus. Isn't that nice? A complaint comes through and takes three or four months for it to happen, and all he does is pay the lien. He lives in Fortson, Georgia. What a deal. He's got his own lawn mowing service at our expense. I implore you to help us, please. I seriously doubt that any of you in this council would tolerate such an insult in your community. Have any questions?
Yes, sir. We have, and now, are you concluded with your statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Okay. All right, we have Counselor Garrett.
It's not a question for Mr. Evans, but for Mr. Hutchinson, the city attorney. I know we've got my quality-of-life changes coming up next week. Do y'all have some sort of ideas we can share with Mr. Evans and what we can do as far as enforcement? Because this is not acceptable if the guy just keeps letting the property become overgrown continuously in violation of our codes and just pays the lien. So if we need to make a change in what we're proposing next week to have some sort of enforcement mechanism.
Well, that's something we can look at, more frequent enforcement. Mr. Hutchinson, do you want to give some history on this?
Excuse me. If I could, just give the mic, please. The property listed at 2865, we've dealt with, actually have, and a timeline chronology that we've been out there four times. The intent on that one, he's in Fortson, and he has a PO box, so there's no physical way to cite the person. Now, when we went out on May the 1st, they had a actual tag on the door from a mortgage contracting services, because we also, they also believe that the house has been abandoned. So we contacted a, we called the Dinah Cox, and that owned, that I guess is the new representative of the property in Texas. We've also sent them a notice. By the end of this month, the property will be cut again. We've talked to the health department, they're going to do their vector services, so they're going to go out there and do bait traps and all that for any of the rats, or issues that may be there. We're also adding herbicide, like I've mentioned before, on our cuts this year to help keep the weeds down, so we're not having to cut the property every three or four weeks. We've also met with, and I talked to Revenue as well, the lien has only been paid once, and that was the one back in 2016. The two in 17 and the one soon to be here in 18 has not been paid by anyone. So those are still outstanding liens. If the property has a PO box, there's no way, we've talked to the postal service, they won't release that information unless we have a warrant or anything like that, and if it doesn't escalate to the point of criminal activity, I don't have much of a leg to stand on to be able to push that any further, because he has a PO box in Fortson, which we could go to, but then I just have an employee, you know, staking out that area, trying to wait for him to come check his box. So we have not heard from the individual at any time. We just know that he came and paid the lien two years ago, and that's the only information we have.
Let me ask you, do you do any further research, like look in whitepages.com?
Correct. We do white pages. We do ancestry, because we try to find if they're still living or deceased, because then we know that's a whole nother issue, going to probate court and going through all of that. So typically, we go through what we can find. If the numbers are good, we'll call them and try to meet with them. If not, it's just another dead end. A lot of times, I think Mr. Carson's address, the number he had was the number there, so if you call, it just says it's disconnected.
And what's Mr. Carson's full name?
Carson, Mr. Robert Louis Carson.
Okay, Mr. Robert Louis Carson. Well, one thing we can do, of course, is this is being televised, so if he has any family, friends, acquaintances in the community that knows how, we might be able to locate them, they could, of course, contact you, John Hutchinson, by going to the city website. There's, of course, email, and then they can call you at 706-653-4000 and ask for you, and they'll be transferred to you. So, you know, perhaps somebody knows how we might be able to get in touch with him so we can provide some relief to the neighbors. I would say, sir, Mr. Evans, that when we do get service on him, he's going to go before a court, and I implore you to be there, because it helps when the judge has the complainant there. A lot of times, if the complainant's not there and they're just going on what staff says, you know, it just doesn't have the same emotional motivation to hear how this is impacting the community.
I will be there and, uh, hoping by now someone who knows the physical address, Mr. gentleman.
If we can get the physical address and you can get that to Mr. Hutchinson, then we can move this along. But, you know, this is, we deal with this so much, and it is just so frustrating and some days infuriating, is that in this country, and certainly in this state, we protect the property rights of the owners. We don't go taking their property without just compensation. We don't go walking on their land without permission or some sort of imminent danger that we have to rectify. And then, at the same time, we have some And then, at the same time, we have some few that abuse those property rights, and their quote "rights" begin to infringe on others. And so we have to find that balance of not infringing on people's property rights and yet making sure your rights aren't being infringed because of their abuses. And that's where we are. So if folks can help us find Mr. Robert Louis Carson, if you know a physical address, nothing bad is, I mean, he's not going to be quote "arrested." The point is to have him served, so he can have his day in court. You can have your day in court, and we can figure this out. If he's got some defense, or I don't know what, he's not the real owner, or something we don't know and can't fathom at this point, well, then he'll have his opportunity to say so. But we need to get this resolved. So we appreciate you coming, and John, maybe if Mr. Evans has some information about a physical location, we can get that and get somebody out there. In the meantime, we'll depend on the citizens to maybe get us some updated information. Okay? Thank you, sir, very much. Yes, I'm sorry, Counselor Thomas.
I have a question for Mr. Hutchinson. Mr. Hutchinson, what happens when you put a lien on the property like we've done here? Does that lien start, do we add interest to that, those kinds of things? What happens once that lien is placed?
On weeds and solid waste, it's just the principle for removing it off the property. So there's no interest added to that. Now, on demos, there are interests, the interest is added on to demolitions. Because typically, the lien for this property to cut it was $167. That's about average, based off of square footage. That's what we do. So that $167 is added at that time, and it does not accrue any interest.
And if we can find a physical location, is there any consequence to the owner not paying the lien, other than it's just sitting there?
Well, unfortunately, the lien is, at that point, it's a legal document. So until it's sold, and that, the liens, now, he's welcome to go and pay the liens off at the, because he wouldn't be able to sell the property. So he has to go down to Revenue and pay those liens, so it's a clean, you know, transition, if somebody else wanted to purchase it. So those liens will stay there until that person comes in and pays them. Now, I guess if the person who is interested in purchasing the property sees those liens, they're also willing, if they wanted to pay that purchase price plus the cost of those liens, they're also welcome to do that as well.
It's very frustrating. And I know that you are as frustrated as anyone else, not being able to clean up the property. I understand that. Hopefully, we'll get some resolution for you. Thank you.
All right, we have Counselor Davis.
Director Hutchinson, you said that the city has mowed this property three times, four times?
Yes, we cut it, I have a whole itinerary here. We cleared it in September 9th of 2016, we cleared it in June 15th of 2017, and we cleared it in December 12th of 2017.
Why don't we have some kind of a structure set up for fines, or escalating fines, or if this continues with anybody?
Well, that's what's intended to come at the work session. We were trying to assign fines to repeat offenders, because right now, it's just everything kind of falls under 1-8, and then it's just a discretion of the judge, depending on what's going on. But just like a speeding ticket, you know how much that costs. If this is a violation, you know what that fine will be once you bring it to court. So that's projected to come to the work session. We were going to try to set repeat offenders or something like that, because right now, we don't have that.
And so that would be environmental court, would become an option?
Yes, sir. Well, that's where they go now. If we cite you, that's where you're going, but it's at the discretion of the judge. A lot of people call and ask, "What are they going to do to this guy or person?" We don't know. It's on the judge.
What about the cost to place a lien on a property?
Our cost is just administrative. We just, we pay the cost of the, whatever it costs, based off the square footage.
Is that also added to the lien, the cost of the lien, what it costs the city to put that in place?
No, sir, not at this time.
Well, why is the city not recovering all costs associated in these matters? And certainly, like my colleague said, I'm going to call it the Quality of Life Ordinance. I think I just heard you say that that's going to be addressed in a couple of weeks, right?
Correct, at work session, yes, sir.
But that would be something else that I would be concerned about, about the city, not just a fine, but recovering all costs associated.
For, I think the work session will help, and then when you support or approve what comes before you, I think that will be a good indication to the judge that this council is really serious, and we want action, and we want to encourage the judge to be, help us be an enforcer for the people in the community. And, you know, I don't want to get into it, but, you know, sometimes, you know, people get probation, they get, they're given additional time. The fine could be up to $1,000, but it's something considerably less. And officers get, they get frustrated, the citizen gets frustrated, we all get frustrated. And so I think when we come to the work session and we can all agree, and hopefully, the judge, environmental court, will agree. And I think we will have something that we can push forward and help clean up this community and give those who are having difficulty enjoying their quality of life a better opportunity to do so.
The amount of these violations, they seem to be, I'm personally, I'm receiving more and more calls and requests. Is that, are you seeing the same thing, Director?
Typically, in the summertime, we get more calls because of the rain and the weather. We're going to get more calls from weeds. It typically triples about this time of year.
But on average, for the year?
On average for the year.
Are we seeing more and more calls? Are we cutting more and more properties throughout the city? Is this becoming more of an occurrence?
Yes, because we are, I guess it's coming more to the forefront, and so people see things are being done. So we are getting more calls because of that, so I guess that's a good and bad thing. But we continue to move forward with the cases. Like I said, if we can physically find them, obviously, that's our first route. I mentioned about, well, I talked before we got on about the property on 14th Street. That's the one that caught fire, and we had all that. And we've been out there, we've torn that property down, so now the debris is actually on the ground. But now, we're at least trying to give the owner an opportunity to get with their insurance company and get that stuff cleared up, but we're only giving them 10 days. So next week, we'll be out there with a backhoe, ready to get rid of the rest of that material. Ideally, I mean, I could have gone out Tuesday, right after it burned, to tear it down, but then the city would have had to pay that $8, $9,000. I'm not sure how that process would go. So we don't mind being intense or putting the pressure on somebody if we can physically find the person. That is typically our biggest hurdle. If we can find them, we get them to court. We've had some on North Dixon that we've dealt with these last couple of weeks, and the judge has understood it are, how important we see this. And not only for this last case, instead of just giving the person a fine, he gave him a continuance. So therefore, we already knew that it was in violation, so now we're going to see him back in another two weeks, and if it's not done again, they're going to get fined again. So we're starting to put other things in place, and I think when people are starting to see that, we are starting to get a flood of calls, because they're like, "Well, hey, they took care of that. Can they take care of this? Can they take care of that?" I know Counselor Barnes mentioned about the property in Series Wood, about the pool issue we were dealing with for months and months. And we adopted a new code, which made us have to put pool covers on those pools. And so they're not attractive nuisances anymore. So certain things that we're putting in place already, we're starting to get better response and compliance with, which then, in turns, cranks the calls up, because we're getting more calls due to trying to get more people into compliance.
Okay, well, I understand. When we have that work session, would you, see if you can compile all that information on average over the years, what's, you know, so we can just get a snapshot of what's actually happening here? Is this something that's escalating in our community? You know, and it just helps us to understand the numbers and how to address it as we move forward. So thank you so much for answering our questions.
So, if I may, are you going to be on the work session next week with this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's good, you know, and as we're talking about this, and, you know, I know the judges are doing a great job, and they do all they can do, but, you know, I think about Judge Aaron Cohen, when I was a kid. And you'd hear all the kids in the community saying, "You don't want to get in trouble. You don't want to go before Judge Cohen, because he's going to throw the book at you." And we were just kids and doing things, but we knew one thing. We did not want to go see, and I didn't have any idea who he was, never met him, but you knew from the streets that you did not want to go see, have to stand before Judge Cohen. And I just wish, I hope, one day, those people who are violators will have the same fear in them about appearing before one of our environmental judges that I had as a kid, and not wanting to have to go before Judge Cohen. And I hope we get there, and I think that's going to help clean up our community. That's just an editorial.
All right, we've got Counselor Garrett.
Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to need you to let us know the legality of it next week. But at some point, if we've got somebody like this, Mr. Evans is going to be back if we can't get a hold of the property owner. We've, I don't know if the recorders, well, I don't think the Recorder's Court will have jurisdiction, but at some point, there's got to be a way for us to take the property and sell it. I know we've got very strong property protections, but if they're in continuous violation of the property, and we can't get them to find them, and we can't get them to come into court, at some point, we've got to have some sort of jurisdiction to remove this nuisance, because otherwise, he's going to be back, and we're not going to have a, this isn't going to do any good, just to continue to send him fines.
I think our land bank authority has a little bit more breadth of authority than some, but Mr. City Attorney, has a-
Well, there is a provision in the weed lien ordinance that, not only for the cost plus the service charge to be placed as a lien, but then the amount, if not paid. The lien amount is not paid within 30 days. The Finance Director can issue an execution, levy on it, advertise and sell. I don't know that they've ever gone to that extreme. And in this case, he may come and pay the lien off before any action can be taken. But that's something that is in the ordinance, and it is a possibility to foreclose on those liens.
Well, we might want to start cranking it up a bit. I know the land bank authority, again, I know they can move a lot more quickly on some of that, because you have a very long, laborious process. And I think also, Mr. City Manager, I think we'll want to have Angelica and the Finance Department look at that process, because I suspect there is some cost involved there. You probably have some filing fees. I don't know if they're waived for the city, but I think we need to look into it. And I'm sure also, depending on how many there are, it's probably going to take a person. I mean, it's, I mean, there's lawyers who that's their practice, is foreclosing. I mean, it's a-
There will be certain costs.
Yeah, yeah, so you're either, we're going to have to farm it out to somebody, or we're going to have to hire somebody in finance. But I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm just saying, let's look at our options, and maybe we just take the worst of the worst. But we've got a lot of them that have some good totals in liens on them, totals that exceed the value of the property. And maybe that's where we start and work our way down. And that's maybe one of the ways we start to get people's attention, is that we will indeed sell your property on the courthouse steps if you can't manage to mow your lawn on a fairly regular basis. Let's see, Mr. City Manager, do you have something?
Well, I was just going to say that I've already asked staff, and they've been working on, and we will bring to you at the work session, all of the properties in the county that we have liens on, and the value of the property versus the escalated amount of the lien. So you'll get to see that probably next week.
Well, let's do that, and maybe have the land bank authority, first check with them, make sure they can offer something helpful of information, and the city attorney can get with them, too. You know, can they help us here? Can they speed this up? We now just approved somebody who's in the Community Reinvestment Department, I believe, a position that was grant-funded, that's also going to be working with the land bank. Is that somebody that's enough to handle what we're talking about here? I don't know. But let's start looking at that to at least take the worst of these properties and start moving them along, if we can come up with a system. We've got Counselor Barnes.
Mr. Evans, please know that we all share your frustration. And the city manager mentioned, he said frustrated, it's all of us here who are frustrated. But please know that a lot of work has been done, a lot of work on the part of John and his department, Lucy Shephard, Pam Hodge, Counselor Garrett, myself, in trying to resolve this. And next week is going to be very, very, very important. Mr. City Manager, you did hit on something that we discussed at the last meeting. I asked Lucy to try to find out about some more stringent measures through the environmental judges. You were on spot-on when you talked about Judge Cohen. And if we had something like that in the environmental court, trust me, we would have fewer violations. But John has already implemented the one thing that has bothered me, that lady right now. John, thank you so very much. This lady right now is opening her bedroom window in peace. This is after years, and it's just a lot of innovation from John. And then Walker came up with ordinances from someone else that John and his group laboriously went through, and many discussions, and it was really fruitful. I am excited about next Tuesday. Can't wait to be here, because there's going to be a lot of changes. Sharon Bunn, a very good friend, part of our family now, is going to be here, because as you very well know, John, she has called many times on issues, and she's been bold in really sounding off and bringing our attention, as Mr. Evans is. And we appreciate you, Mr. Evans, for coming ahead. But you want to know something? You're right, I see what you're saying, you say, the jungle, that is a jungle. And so I'm looking forward to next Tuesday being very fruitful.
We've got Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Hutchinson, one of the things that I'd like for you to take a look at, if you have not already done that, is some kind of escalating fee. I have heard, I have not had a parking ticket in a long time, but I understand that if you get a parking ticket and you don't pay it within a certain period of time, the cost goes up. And if we have liens on these properties that are a year old or so, maybe there's something we can do there. If you don't pay that lien within a certain time, there's some kind of a fine or, you know, an escalating cost. And this is not atypical, I think, throughout a lot of the liens that we do, that they just sit there. And so I would like for us to take a look at, to see if there's something we can do, either with the liens, or with fines, or with both. From what I understand, from what you have said, we are looking at liens on this property. To date, there have been no fines for this property owner. And if you have to go out there three times and cut this guy's grass, there ought to be a fine to that. And if we can make his, if his pocketbook is affected by this, it might get his attention. And so I would like for us to look at that, to see if there's some kind of escalating clause that we can put into place that would assist the judge in environmental court in making these, some of these determinations. And it may not be able, you may not have time before the work session next week to put all that in, but at some point, I'd like to see us take a look at that. Thank you.
We have Counselor Baker.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, while we're doing all of that, if you could bring us some information of, I know it's different if the property's free and clear, if there's a mortgage lender involved, because they have some very strong protective rights. So if you could give us some information, if there's a mortgage lender involved, and really, how we can work with them, not against them, to try to get it resolved.
Correct. Well, typically, if we find that, because typically, they'll put that notice on the door. At that point, we'll have something like that, we'll call them. And typically, the way it's worked out is they'll go ahead and take care of it. I think we had a few of them in the St. Elmo area that were in that same situation. And once we notified the lending company that had taken back the property, they proceeded to get it cut before we went out there and did it. So typically, if we, like I said, if we have a trail to follow, we'll follow it. It's just a lot of times, it's a lot of dead ends, and it kind of puts us in a bad spot. But we've dealt with a lot of lending companies, and if they have a notice posted on the door claiming that it's abandoned, or it's been foreclosed, and they're taking back the property, that's who we then start sending those letters to, and typically, they get it done, because they want a clean, nice property, so therefore, they can sell it. So typically, if we get to the point where we find a lender, we talk to the lender, we'll get them on the phone, and they typically come into compliance.
Yeah, and I think, and not to- And I think, and not to certainly put words in Counselor Baker's mouth, but where you would run into the issue that he's talking about, is where you have somebody either living in the house or not living in the house, but dutifully paying their mortgage. And then all of a sudden, the mortgage company, the bank, cares very much about you foreclosing on the property they have an interest in. So, you know, you just, and that's why there's law firms that, you know, deal with this. It's a full-time job. We'll just have to figure out what we can do and how we can best do it as we move through these new waters. We've got Counselor Davis.
Well, and I'm in agreement with Counselor Baker. I think the taking of property is a very sensitive issue, Mayor, but what you just said, I'd like to look at all the options. I know it was stated that sometimes we have a hard time finding these people, and just, but like the mayor said, there's law firms that specialize in that, and if you're going to put a lien on it, I'm sure they have a way of finding these people as well. My concern is just that the city is recovering all cost, and that's where you put the lien. Eventually, a lien, it's, you know, that's a strong message, having a lien on a property. But I think the city should always be made whole, no matter what the cost may be, so why don't you look into that as well, as some of the options of collections or recovering, where it's, if your efforts, or your office efforts are futile, then maybe there's some attorneys out there that can find these people.
All right, that looks like it's it for now, Mr. Evans. I hope you heard that we're very concerned, and we're trying to work on it in every way we can, and we're not the only community that deals with these problems, by the way. It's just an unfortunate fact of life when it comes to some people's rights, they believing they're absolute when they're infringing on others, and indeed, they're not absolute. So, thank you very much, and we'll move on to our next person on public agenda. That's Ms. Teresa Alamin, who's representing the Southern Anti-Racism Network, and she wants to talk to us about budget issues.
Thank you. I do have a handout.
Okay, well, Lindsey will get that from you, and then when you get to the podium, we'll start your time, and if you'd just state your name and address.
Teresa Alamin, 3911 Steam Mill Road. And I'm raising this budget issue in the context of employee relations and the treatment of employees. In 2012, I watched you deliberating about the pension plan, and what you have before you is a notice from my pension plan, because what I asked for in the way of information in 2012 was that notice that you give to employees about the state of their pension plans. And if you notice from my pension plan, notice just received a few days ago, I'm quite concerned at watching that 2% decline year after year. And for those of us who are in that pension plan, which is currently 107% funded, but that pension plan was once in the red zone, and we were getting flurries of notice from the trustees about how we were going to get out of the red zone. And when I started asking about the pension plan here, when I saw you deliberating about it in 2012, and when you decided to take the 15-year promise, so that your pension plan would be solvent by the year 2027, and I'll never forget how many phone calls I was trying to make to try to understand exactly how underfunded the plan was. And I think I heard finally that it was 72% funded at that time. Now, I do recall that in 2014, Madam Mayor, that you mentioned it was 80% funded that year. So I'm wondering what has occurred over these years, because when I asked Mr. City Manager, this is what I was asking you for in 2012, and you told me you didn't give employees this kind of notice, the notice that is right there, because the current, the person who was the human resources person at the time, I gave him a bunch of information, trying to get this notice that you give to employees. Now, my pension plan says, it's a federal law, that employees have to be, have to be notified about the status of their defined benefit pension plan. So it was my assumption that you were doing that as well. So I think what I'm asking now, and please consider this an open records request, Mr. City Attorney, and Ms. Halliwell, I guess she would be the keeper of the records on this, if I could have the last three years of notices that have been given to the employees about the status of the pension plan, and especially now, when they're paying 4% into the plan. And I think it's a real problem that you're asking new employees to pay 8% in the plan. And I think it was last year that I saw somebody, hospital authority or something, that pulled out of the plan, because they said they couldn't get employees willing to pay 8% new into the plan. So this is a legal notice from my pension plan, and I'm just giving it to you as an example of what I'm requesting, as an open records request for the status of the pension plan for the employees of the Columbus Consolidated Government. Now, in addition, as you know, I've talked to you about the prison labor issue quite a bit, so that's kind of my part two here, because I think every time I hear you say that, and I think I heard you say it last week, Madam Mayor, when you were talking to the warden, and it sounded like, give the warden anything he wants, because we save $15 million turning out, what all of us in the community are saying slaves every day, that you turn out. And that whole thing about the $15 million, Madam Mayor, everybody keeps asking me, what are they doing with the $15 million that they're saving? And remember, Mr. City Manager, I asked you, what do you base that on? In 2012, you were telling about the savings. I said, what do you base that on? And your answer to me is what the lowest paid worker would earn in wages and benefits. So when people ask me that question in the community about what they are saving, I said, they are not paying for workers who would be or should be earning a wage. They are not paying workers. And so that so-called savings is, they don't have the $15 million to pay workers, so instead, they use slavery by another name. I think, Madam Mayor, as you talked about, I think earlier this year, or maybe it was last year, that this thing that you're doing is probably going to go away eventually, because lots of people are up in arms about the use of this. Every time I tell people, whether it's in Atlanta, whether it's in Chicago, and I tell this story everywhere, trust me, everywhere, that the Columbus Consolidated Government uses prisoners as slave labor to do its services. Now, I'm going to make another open records request. These are the turnout sheets of the slave labor. In 2012, I requested this information. Ms. Sheptall sent me a letter saying it was a state secret, and I couldn't get it. You remember that, Ms. Sheptall? And I called you up and said, come on now, we know this isn't a state secret. And you told me I would have to pay for the copies. Well, these are the copies I paid $10.47 for. It's two months. It's two months. It's two months of copies. I'm going to make another request for these turnout sheets, so that I can get the turnout sheets again, like I got them before. Now, I have made a subsequent request. Ms. Sheptall, is there an issue?
Ma'am, just continue, they're just conferring.
Oh, okay, I just saw them talking back and forth.
A little over two minutes.
Okay, great. Because I am making an open records request for these turnout sheets again, something I have received before, that I paid copies for. The last time I made a request for the turnout sheets, Ms. Sheptall took days upon days upon days to create some phony records that she sent me via email. I didn't pay for that. And just as an aside, I find that the Columbus Consolidated Government has a resistance to complying with open records requests. I want the turnout sheets, and I will send an email to Ms. Sheptall, since I got them from her before, requesting the months that I want the turnout sheets from, that are copied turnout sheets, Ms. Sheptall, not the phony things that were created on email. So these are the things I'm concerned about, in terms of the employees here and the lack thereof, and so how you spend money, because the money that you spend, you give away millions of dollars. And I know this, because I refused 13,000 of the dollars you give away. It's charity that you give away. You can't really, you really can't afford it. You really can't. And so what I have been trying to figure out for years is this financial situation here. When I talked to another person about the OLOS sheets, and I looked on those OLOS sheets, and I saw where bonus dollars were being given to the overseers over the prison labor in parks and recreation. So I was asking the question about, why is it that there's so much money from the public safety dollars going into parks and recreation? And that's because you're paying the people who oversee the prisoners who work in parks and recreation special bonuses for watching the prisoners. That's the explanation that I receive. And as we come up on this budget period, where we'll eventually get to the public hearings, I think I can be at the June 12 public hearing to talk more about this. But I do want to say that I have deep concerns about how you're treating the employees or lack thereof, and particularly around the pension plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it. A couple of things, do get your open records request in and writing.
I will.
Okay, because we need that. I think the law requires it, but we certainly need it. And the pension is in all of my budget letters, so we are funded like 94% for general government, a little less for public safety. We've made tremendous improvement since the numbers you were quoting, that's due to the pension reform that we implemented. The bonuses you're talking about go to post-certified officers, meaning that they're certified law enforcement officers, and we have to have certified law enforcement officers watching prisoners. I note your position on this, I've, as you've mentioned, articulated it. I don't know how much longer this particular construct will go on, either politically or legally, but that's something that other folks are going to have to determine. And what we quote "do" with the money is, that would be money that would have to be taxed to the citizens to pay the true cost of doing business. So, you're right. And so that's the, those are the issues, okay? All right, thank you so much. We're going to let the city attorney address a couple of things, and as I said, please do get in your open records request.
Just a couple of points, Mayor, with respect to the pension records, we will get with the finance director and point Ms. Alamin in the right direction. That information is available publicly in several places. The other point I want to make is, with respect to certain state inmate information, it is confidential under state law. And if Ms. Alamin makes a request that goes to documents that are confidential under state law, those documents will not be released. And Ms. Sheptall has followed the law precisely and will continue to do so. So don't come in here talking about phony emails or phony reports.
Now, Ms. Alamin, we're, that's, you've made some accusations, and he's just responding. But Ms. Alamin, I know, Ms. Alamin, what he's saying, and you've completed your time, the buzzer ran out on both five-minute sessions, so we're going to conclude.
He didn't say to me directly, don't you come in here.
Right, I know, I know. Sure, I know.
He's doing this.
But, you know.
By the way.
Ms. Alamin.
My name is Ms. Bell on the public agenda.
Okay.
Ms. Bell, I'm Teresa with an H.
Okay.
Teresa with an H.
Thank you.
Which I'm very serious about.
That's right, all right. Thank you so much, we appreciate you. Okay, that concludes our public agenda, and we'll move now into the city manager's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a street acceptance for a portion of Towns Way in Section 5, the Towns Way at Sonoma Point. We're asking you to approve the acceptance of this street. It has been inspected and recommended by our city engineer.
We've got a motion from Mayor Protem to approve. Is there a second? A second? Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, you may record your votes electronically. And we need one, there we go, it passes.
And next, I've got a donation by West Georgia Inspectors Association. I have, do have a Chief Shores here from Fire EMS, but they are making a donation of $1,000 to be used to assist the fire department's effort of fire prevention.
Got a motion to accept in a second. Is there any discussion on this item? We've got Counselor Thomas.
I wonder if Chief Shores would come up and just give us a real brief description of this program, what this will be used for.
All right, good morning, counsel. Yes, thank you, Ms. Thomas. So, for many years, the department has had a program in place for those less fortunate in our community, to where we'll provide a smoke detector, we'll install that smoke detector free of charge, if they're unable to do so. So usually, we do around 200 or so of those a year, it varies, and a lot of times, we run into situations where there's a cooking fire in a home, and an elderly person who's unable to have these units installed. We'll make these requests, and we'll certainly come out and put them in. So we appreciate the West Georgia Inspectors Association for providing this funding for us, so it keeps us from having to pull out of our operating materials that amount that we would normally have.
And how does somebody give in to that?
Right, so typically, typically, they'll call fire prevention, the trucks or crews are very well-versed in letting the public know how they can get in touch with us. We'll put a card in, it's all tracked electronically, and we'll send these smoke detectors out to those truck crews. They'll in turn call the resident, and we'll schedule an appointment.
And, Madam Mayor, since we have our inspections and codes director, John Hudgens, standing by, I'd like for him to at least let you know how and what he has to do with West Georgia Inspectors Association.
West Georgia Inspector Association is our kind of independent group, that we provide continuing aid and things like that to inspectors, contractors, developers around the county and surrounding counties on new codes, updated codes. We have classes quarterly. So typically, the money that we receive off of that, and our scholarship golf tournament, which was just held last Saturday at Bull Creek, that money and proceeds goes to scholarships for people in the organization, and also money that we donate to Columbus Fire and EMS.
All right, that concludes the discussion. We have a motion in a second. You may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Next, I've got a fiscal year 18 National Crime Statistics Exchange Initiative grant. It's $221,068.
We've got a motion to accept the grant. Is there a second?
Question.
All right, any discussion on the FY18 National Crime Statistics Grant? You may record your votes electronically. And, Mr. City Manager, as they do that, did we skip the Northside School donation batting cages?
I think we did.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion from Counselor Davis, and a second from Mayor Protem to accept Northside High School donation of batting cages, and the estimated cost for the batting cages is $21,600. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing that there's none, you may record your votes electronically.
Madam Mayor, I've got an adult drug court dis- Madam Mayor, I've got an Adult Drug Court discretionary grant. It's $500,000 and with a 25% cash or income match. We're asking your approval.
Got a motion in a second for approval. Any discussion on this item? All right. You may record your votes electronically. And it passes.
Got 2018 Georgia Association of EMS and Georgia Trauma Commission grant, Phase 2. It's a $4,925.26 grant.
We've got a motion in a second for approval. Is there any discussion related to this? Seeing none, please record your votes electronically. And it passes.
And as I prepare to go into the purchases, Madam Mayor, I would just pause to thank those who are so can to this government and public, 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 private partnerships. As you can see, we're always getting donations of batting cages and just smoke detectors and all, people are involved in this community and they care. And so, I just wanted to acknowledge the number of donations that come before this council for your acceptance. With that, on the purchases, I've got Elbaco Body Shield External Vest Carriers for Sheriff's Office.
Yes.
E, G, and H.
Okay. We've got a motion. D has already been approved, so that you know. So, there's a motion to approve the purchases with pulling item F. So, the motion on the table is A, B, C, E, G, and H. Is there a second? All right. Any discussion as to A, B, C, E, G, and H? All right. Seeing none, you can record your votes electronically. And those pass. And now to item F. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item F is a change order, one for Melrose Drive, Boxwood Boulevard, and Decatur Street, bridge replacements, and Waterford Road Bridge improvements. I've got the city engineer who's going to come and explain what is going on with these bridges and/or improvement. And I can tell you that, well, why don't I just let you explain it?
Good morning. In March of last year, we came to council and you approved a contract for Southeastern Site Development for the Boxwood Boulevard Bridge, which is now under construction. At the same time, we asked for approval to Keywit Construction Company for the Waterford Bridge. We bid all four of those bridges out at one time, and then when we got the bids, they came in higher than expected. And we decided it was in our best interest, because we had the option to choose the bridges individually, it was in our best interest to award the bridge, the Waterford Bridge, to Keywit because it was like $300,000 cheaper than the bid to Southeastern. So, we awarded that bid to Keywit and then we awarded Boxwood Boulevard Bridge to Southeastern. We had the option to add the other two bridges once we had funding approved in FY18, which is what we're coming to you today to approve the funding for the Melrose and the Decatur. We've been working on some utility issues and right-of-way issues that we've had on those two bridges. So, we're just asking to add those two bridges to the bid that was approved in 2017. I will say this, we did speak with the contractor. He's honoring the bid that was made in 2017 for those two additional bridges. And of course, we do have the option to rebid, but we expect with what we're seeing in bid prices right now, it would be significantly higher if we had to rebid those two bridges.
So, the change order is not because the price of a bridge.
Right. It's just adding them to the contract.
Increased. It's a change order because you're adding additional bridges to that one vendor.
Right.
So, we wanted to be clear on that.
Okay. We've got a motion. Is that a second?
No.
Okay. Okay. Good. Good. We've got a motion and second. Is there any further discussion or questions? All right. Seeing none, please record your votes electronically. And the item passes.
And, Madam Mayor, I'd like to bring to emergency.
I have a question. Okay. Grant move. You know, I had asked, what's happening on Grant move? If you could send it to me.
You want me to send it by email?
That would be fine. Thank you.
I'll email it to you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Just a couple of emergency purchases. One for Fire EMS of all-terrain, of an all-terrain vehicle. They had some issues and we did approve an emergency purchase for them in the amount of $13,479. And the funds, you don't have to vote on it, but the funds are budgeted in the FY18 budget for that. And the repairs, the repairs were too costly and there was no way to rapidly respond to injuries or emergencies in hard-to-reach areas such as the River Walk. And so, we did move forward with that purchase. And then, the second one is a vehicle for the marshal's office. I don't have all the details on why that vehicle burned up, but it was, it happened this weekend. I'm sure you saw it in the news. But it caught fire and it was there. And I don't have all of the details of why a vehicle would be sitting and catch fire, but it did and it burned up. And so, we want to go ahead and replace that vehicle. So, that cost is $35,000. And the finance director is working on a funding source for that and we want to make you aware of that. And so, then number eight.
We have Counselor Allen.
Sure.
Hold on. There we go. Excuse me. I wanted to ask if the fire department has an investigation into the burning of the vehicle.
Well, let me just, and I haven't asked them because it just happened over the weekend, but I will follow up and make sure that they look into that.
Thank you.
Sure. And Chief Shores is here, so I'm sure he heard what you said and what we're going to be asking. So, I'd ask that they go ahead and look into.
Already taking place.
Already taking place. Thank you. Okay? So, number eight, I've got a memorandum of understanding with Body Evolution GM. I've had the Parks and Rec people here, but this organization, they want to do a promoting raise funds for funding to improve the Theo McGee Park, which is located at Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard in partnership with the Parks and Rec Department. And you may know that that playground burned in recent weeks or a few months ago. And so, the goal of this Body Evolution GM is to replace and/or repair the existing playground destroyed by vandalism. And we're asking for your approval to enter a memorandum of understanding with Body Evolution GM.
All right. We've got a motion and second. Any further discussion or any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state "aye." Oh, is there, it's on, it's queued up, actually. I didn't think it was, but you can record your votes electronically. I see it. Okay.
And the final thing on my agenda, Mayor and counsel, I've got a, an update from HR related to our payroll system. HR Director Rita Hollowell.
I'm not HR Director.
And Finance Director Angelica Alexander.
So, I'll just start out the presentation. So, this is just to provide counsel with a very high-level, very quick update as far as the CGI Advantage 360 project. The project team consists of members of the Finance Department, the Human Resources Department, and the IT Department. We, let me just say that there are, I'd like to publicly thank the employees of these departments and also the departments that have been participating in the implementation of our most largest effort, which was our human resources, human resources payroll system upgrade. There have been a ton of hours spent towards, you know, implementing this particular phase of the project. And so, I'd just like to publicly thank them for their, for their time and their can-do-it attitude and always staying positive and just pushing the goal along. But as far as the project itself, we started out, the initial contract for the project came to council, I believe it was February of 2016. Within April of 2016, we started the first phase of the project, which was, well, actually it was the second, yeah, the first phase, second phase of the project, which was implementation of the financial management system. That kicked off in April of 2016. In July of 2016, simultaneously, we kicked off the upgrade of our performance budgeting system. The budget system went live in November of 2016 and the financial system upgrade went live in January of 2017. The fourth phase of the project, which is not the last phase of the project, but a very important phase of the project, is the human resources management system upgrade. That actually went in fact live May. So, that was this month that we've gone live. This week is our first week actually processing payroll in the new system. So, kind of on pins and needles right now. But I think we'll, with the training that's been received and all the effort that's been put into the project by the project team and by our vendor CGI, I think we'll have a very successful payroll run this, and employees will get paid on Friday. So, the last phase of the project, though, is our employee self-service phase. This phase, Rita, Director Hollowell will talk more about that particular phase as far as what's coming. But we plan to implement employee self-service within the next 60 days. Employee self-service will allow employees the ability to access their W2s, their paycheck stubs online. That's not something that we have access to now. But Director Hollowell will speak more in terms of that. But before we get to Director Hollowell, Director Toley, I'd like for him to just sort of come up and talk about why we migrated to this new platform as far as this Advantage 360 project, which I would have to say has been successful thus far, but if you could come up. Director Toley.
Good morning. I was just asked to kind of briefly describe why we moved. And you may remember in 2015, January, February timeframe, I came to council and we had some big things on the list and you'll hear a little bit about it later, but one of them was this system was on the mainframe. And the mainframe is too costly really to keep going for the city and it also doesn't provide any features. So, with mainframe software, we would never be able to do employee self-serve, the management self-serve, vendor self-serve. You really couldn't do all the things that y'all asked for, continually asked for different things from IT and from finance, from payroll, from HR. And the new systems will allow us to do that. So, with the mainframe, which is basically the green screen or the black screen, which is mostly text, now we can go to what you're more familiar with. So, now the employees will be able to actually check all of their stubs, do the W2s, change different information, and view things in real time. So, just in keeping with some of your vision, and it's also our vision, that we would upgrade to a system that kind of is more balanced with today's technologies. It's also cloud-based. It's a SaaS service, software as a service, which means that it helps prevent things like might have happened with Atlanta. You can still, things like that can occur, but it's less likely. It's one more safeguard to kind of protect our employee data. Also, in this project, we've moved from social security numbers, and it may be later or we may have already said it, to strictly employee IDs. So, we no longer have available anywhere social security numbers for anybody to view except for a very, a small number of folks that have to do it for background checks and stuff like that. So, we just needed to move forward with a new system and this is the new system. So, thanks.
So, the changes that's coming, Director Hollowell, you want to talk about this or? So, as far as what's coming with this new system, like I stated before, the employees with employee self-service will be able to view their pay advices online. This is something that we currently do not have with our old mainframe system. W2s and will be able to be viewed online. You can actually, actually access your W4 and your G4s, which is your tax allowance forms. You can access those through the new system as well. As far as mentioned, I mean, as Director Toley mentioned, you'll be able to make some small changes to, so that you, your information is always up to date, such as your address, your direct deposit information, those types of changes employees will be able to make online. There is another feature, the manager's self-service. We'll be able to manage our leave, which is our vacation and sick usages through the system, as well as performance appraisals. This is currently, those two features are currently housed on the Lotus Notes database. And I know that Director Toley is trying to migrate all of the Lotus Notes database to some other platform, some web-based platform. And so, we'll be able to process performance appraisals and, as well as handle leave management in the new system. So, here is an image of our current or our old check advice statement. There's no information here, but it provided the current pay date as well as the tax status, your year-to-date earnings, the hours that you were being paid for, any deductions that were coming out of your paycheck. This is what our old pay advice looks like. And this is what the new pay advice looks like. And so, we provided this information, I believe Director Hollowell sent an email out to all employees with this same, these same images, just informing them how to read their new pay advices. And so, as you can see with number one here, we're just telling them this is where your employee contact information is and to keep that information up to date. Number two, we're just highlighting that we'll no longer identify employees with, by their social security numbers and that their new employee ID numbers will be listed here on their pay advice. That's a number that employees really should learn. They should memorize this new employee ID number because again, only, as Director Toley stated, a very select, few people have access to employees' social security numbers. So, we're identifying employees strictly by their employee ID numbers. Number three is just where you find your tax filing, your tax, your filing status as far as the number of exemptions that you're claiming, whether it's federal or state, as well as the paycheck date. Number four here, it just shows you what your current pay is, is the amount and the amount of hours that you're being paid for. On the new pay advice, we no longer report your year-to-date gross pay. So, that information is not on the new pay advice. As far as your deductions are concerned, what's new about your deductions that are listed here is that there are now pre- and post-tax columns, whereas on the old check advice, everything was in one column. So, you didn't know what was pre-tax or what was post-tax. But here, it's clearly defined and separated out into different columns, shows the current amount and the year-to-date amount. And then, lastly, with number six, the leave. On our old pay advices, it did show the year-to-date leave usage, whereas on the new advices, it only shows the current leave that's accrued and used, but the balance column has a cumulative total. So, those are really the main differences with the pay advices as far as this new pay advice and the old pay advices that employees are used to seeing. They are a little bit bigger. Our new, our pay advices previously, I believe, really fit an eight-by-eleven page, whereas the new advices are 11-by-14. So, they're a little, a little larger.
We've got Counselor Thomas.
I was just wondering, and maybe Director Toley could help with this too. All of it, this is going to be paper, right?
Yes.
As well as I'm able to access it online?
Yes.
Employees.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I don't know, I don't have enough knowledge about it to know that if, if we went strictly to an online program rather than having paper, will that save any money, or is that, is it more costly to put that together than not, or?
No, actually, the plan is, and it, that we would set a date, we have approximately six months' worth of paper advices. And we hope that during sometime between now and January, that we would go through all of the information to let employees know that we would prefer, and I think at some point, we would mandate, online only. It saves you all of the advices, and that is part of the plan. But right now, we wanted to kind of get through our first W2s through paper, and then kind of some point after that, say, okay, now from now on, it's online. We've given you plenty of time to log in, plenty of time to look, you see how everything works, we've gone through a whole federal cycle with you now on paper. From now on, you really need to do it without paper, and it would save quite a bit. It saves tangibly in paper and printing costs, but it also saves kind of intangible the amount of time it takes people to actually do those jobs. So you're talking in the tens of thousands of dollars a year if we go to strictly let them use the system as designed and do not do paper advices.
And I know that there are some of our employees who do not have access to, or at least there used to be, they don't have access to the email. Is that?
Well, and that's where I was going to come in, because I haven't had this conversation with the IT Director, or Finance Director, or HR Director. I think ideally, we do want to move in that direction, but it may be that if you have access to a city computer, then we will not issue those advices. But for those who are in the field, laborers, and don't have access to a computer, or don't know how to use a computer, then, you know, my thought is that we'll continue to provide those to them through their management, their department, or their supervisors. As I've been a department head and worked out in the field, I do know that we have employees that fit into all of those categories. And so I would not, I would not tell them, and I wanted to say this so that they hear it, because they're watching by television, I don't want them to panic, but they will continue to receive the pay advices, those who do not have access. Those perhaps with access to city computers, however many we've got, and we know who have them, then we would not. So for those watching, if you are a laborer out there in public works, or engineering, or parts and wreck, or at Metra, don't panic. You're going to continue to get your advice.
And I would think, and Director, you know the answer to this better than I, that if, as an employee, I did not have an email, a city email address, but I had the capability of going online and picking this up, I might want to say to you, don't send me a paper when I want to do it online. There's always that kind of a scenario.
Yeah, HR would actually come up with whatever policy or procedures. All employees have, or potentially do have, email addresses, so we have that problem solved. Counsel has helped me solve that problem with our licensing. So we can potentially do that for everyone, and it's a web-based system, so if you have any access to the web at all, you don't have to be on a city computer. This is outside of our system, so you could actually log in from any mobile device even to look at your stuff. But that's all got to be planned out. We're trying to get through today, and I'm kind of nervous, because this is hit or miss now today, you know, it's time to make it, make it work. But to answer the email question, we do have the potential emails for all full-time employees, and really all employees, except for retirees.
And I think probably as we, as we go on, we'll have more and more people who will be computer-savvy enough that they will, I don't want that piece of paper, okay? I'd rather do it online, so. I should have known you guys were on top of that.
Yeah, and we do want to be considerate, and I know, you know, as I was telling the Finance Director, she was whispering to me, I mean, a lot of people just still have flip phones, and they don't, they don't have all that stuff. So we got to be sensitive to that, and we will. But these are going to be what they receive this Friday.
Correct.
And so they need to know that the new one is what they will receive this Friday, not the old pay advice. Thank you. So Madam Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate that update. We'll move now to the clerk, Ms. Washington.
Madam Mayor and members of council, on the clerk's agenda, we have a few items of information, two memorandums from me advising of upcoming board vacancies on our Board of Water Commissioners, as well as our Convention and Visitors Board of Commissioners, two temporary street closing applications, one for June 6th to close Bay Avenue from 10th Street to 11th Street, and 10th Street from Front Avenue to Bay Avenue in connection with the Uptown Family Day event at Woodger Park. Then another one scheduled for August the 7th to temporarily close Playa del Rey Drive from Meadowlock Drive to Califon Drive in connection with the National Night Out Against Crime Block Party. We have minutes of the Budget Review Committee for May 1st and May 8th. Counsel can receive.
We've got a motion and a second, that the minutes be received. All those in favor, please state aye. Counselor Allen, did you have a comment?
Yes.
Okay, hold on a second, let me get you. Here you go.
I wanted to ask the clerk if she would record my vote in favor of the Hilton, the mayor's letter on the Hilton property and the resolution. Thank you.
I'll make a note of that. Then on our board appointments, on the Board of Honor, we still need someone for Ms. Beth Harris, who has resigned. Building Authority needs someone for Mr. Cal Jackson's seat, who has resigned. The Columbus Aquatics Commission, Ms. Sally Bradley is no longer interested in serving on that board, so we'll need another nominee for that. Mr. Rick Cravens is, is interested if someone wants to nominate him.
I'll nominate Mr. Cravens.
Okay, and we'll bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. Waiting to hear back from Mr. Wes Kelly. On the Community Development Advisory Council, we still need a nominee for Districts 3, 6, and 10. On the Comprehensive Plan and Stakeholders Committee, need someone for this District 10 seat. Cooperative Extension, Ms. Vanessa Lewis has resigned, will need a replacement for this seat. The Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we still need someone for District 2, and the committee.
I'll nominate Ms. Williams.
Okay, because this is a District 2, we can go ahead and confirm her.
Got a motion and second for confirmation. All those in favor, please state aye.
Mr. John DeLeo's seat, the commission is recommending Mr. Dominique Williamson as Mr. DeLeo, does not want to serve again.
I'll nominate Ms. Williams.
And we'll bring this one back next week. Ms. Karen Henderson is not eligible to succeed herself, will need a replacement for that seat. And for Ms. Christine Consalletti, she is not eligible to serve again. The commission is recommending Mr. Larry Derby, someone wants to nominate him.
I'll nominate Mr. Derby.
And then for Ms. Wanda Jenkins, the commission is recommending Sharon Baker. Someone wants, okay. And then we are waiting to hear back from Ms. Courtney Loughlin. On the Liberty District Advisory Committee, we still need representative for Districts 2, 4, 5, and 7. On the Pension Board, Mayor Mr. R. Plummer, he is not eligible. Then on the Personnel Review Board, Mr. Keith Weeks has resigned, will need a replacement for that seat. And we still need someone for Dr. Roger Brown and Ms. Cassie Renfro's seat on the Tree Board. And that's all I have.
All right. Counselor, let's see here, Counselor Davis.
Madam Clerk, on the Liberty District Advisory Board, are you eligible, it's an advisory board, but if you are already serving on a commission or another board, are you eligible to serve on the advisory committee?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
I think, because it's a temporary commission.
That is correct.
It's not a permanent commission.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Kathleen Mason for District 2.
I'm sorry, who was it?
Kathleen Mason.
Okay. Can I get a motion for confirmation?
We've got a motion, is there a second?
Right.
All right, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, that concludes our business for the day. I did have, Madam Clerk, I did have a recommendation for the nominee for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but we can get that next time. I think they still have some time left. Okay? Great, thank you. All right, that concludes our business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, please state aye. All right, if everybody would stay with us, we're going to change the room around a bit and place musical chairs, and we'll have a 15-minute break and be back with you for budget review. We're adjourned.